Retainer from the county. So, we will use Timmons to do the engineering study. RRMM has done our last, Dr. Hornick, correct me if I'm wrong, six? I don't even want to say out loud how many we've done. Six, five, studies?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. So, I think we were able to go forward with a concept that basically achieves a few goals that we had in mind. We have a budget. We need to stay within our budget. We are overcrowded in our high school. This plan limits or addresses those concerns in a quick period of time. And then we create new programs on campus for our students. Continuing to have these conversations and what about this, what about this, what about this? I agree that we've spent too much money on designs. I don't disagree with you at all. But I think we've come up with a very comprehensive concept within a budget structure. And this design and engineering firm will tell us whether it's viable or not. So, if every board member could let me know or let the superintendent know your thoughts?
Well, I had a conversation last Friday with Dr. Hornick and was informed that we are not at any point to be voting on anything. I believe that there is a better suited option and I would also like to explore that. I know I'm not on the CIP committee. I did have interest, but I decided to not throw my hat into the ring so that way other members would have the ability to do so. But I also don't believe that my position has been fully represented in those committee meetings. And so, I would also like to ask staff to, maybe, Dr. Hornick, you and I could have a meeting about my ideas and I'm open to your schedule. I know you're busy. But I would like to explore another option that I'm not prepared to bring forward today, but I do believe that we have the ability to save millions of dollars while still having first-class education for CTE. So, right now, I'm not in a position to vote on anything.
I'm not asking for a vote. I'm asking for, a good friend of mine said that the previous board used to kind of give a thumbs up or a thumbs down, you know, and we don't need to vote. He has the authority to do it. I feel like-
What, though? I guess maybe I'm not catching on to doing what.
To sign a contract with an engineer and design firm to move forward to see if this concept is viable.
I would like to see that contract if we're giving a pulse. You know what I mean? I'm not prepared to give a position when I don't know what's in front of me.
Right. That falls under the superintendent's responsibilities.
Currently, the superintendent has that authority under policy-
Correct.
-to enter into a contract depending on the amount. Is that correct, Jack?
Correct.
That's the defining factor?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you would be not in favor?
I guess, because I don't know what I'm giving a pulse on.
Understand.
I am in favor. I think we need to see if this is feasible. That's the first step. We're not at the point of saying this building's going up. We're just figuring out, can it go up? Can it go there? Can we do it? So, I'm in favor of that step taking place.
Yeah.
I would absolutely support that step and ask the superintendent to go forward and take that action to see whether or not this is a viable, realistic opportunity for us to get a CTE building in a very short timeframe so we could actually implement and get some of our trades, profession classes going forward. And if it's not a viable option at this time, then we continue exploring the other options, including the TAC building that the chairperson would like to bring forward and has spoken about in the past. But yeah, I think that we need to continue going forward. We have the Board of Supervisors who I believe has provided support, at least theoretical support, in the funding level that they would be able to help us with without having to go out to taxpayers and ask for more money from taxpayers to support a bond or anything. And again, it would give us some leeway relative to the overcrowding issues and potential planning for another high school that we may need farther down the line from now. So, I would support that.
I would just ask, Dr. Hornick, is there any specifics you would like to add regarding the groups that we're utilizing for the proposal, if you will?
Yes, so, as far as, what we need right now is a, basically, a civil engineering firm to assess the feasibility of sites. And so, the one that logically comes to mind, but I would work with Doug to see, you know, as far as what group is going to give us the best, you know, rate to do it. But of course, you know, Timmons comes to mind because of, again, they're, they have quite a longstanding understanding of Orange County in general. And so, that would be primarily the group. That really needs to be the first step, right? We have a concept of a facility where you could accomplish two goals. My hope would be that we could add enough classroom space in a traditional manner by being able to move some CTE programs to this building that would hopefully at least cover the population growth that the Welton Cooper Center has put forward as far as what we're expected to see over the next 10 years. A key limitation to the Welton Coopers, Welton Cooper Centers demographics that you all have is that it is based on, basically, birth rates and current birth rates. And so, even new homes in Wilderness Shores at this moment, right, in Phase III, aren't, that would be in addition to their projections. New homes in Round Hill would be in addition to their projections. And so, I would really like a solution that could create 250, 300 seats for classrooms, classroom space, as well as give us enough room to put key lab areas with adjoining classrooms for the programs that we know we need here in Orange within the trades. So, that would be things like masonry, electricity, plumbing, HVAC, construction trades, carpentry, if you will. I think it would be, we, it would be really great to have auto, auto tech in particular, where our students don't have to go to Culpeper from 6:00 to 10:00?
Four to 10:00.
Four to 10:00, okay, in the evening. I would really like to find a way to help our JROTC friends, who you heard earlier, not have to be in their current building. That needs to be addressed. Way to improve our ag programming with some, I'd love to have some space that could potentially be adjacent to the greenhouse, right, in some capacity so that we are not, we're not at the ag building and then trying to get to the greenhouse back and forth with that greenhouse, you know, whether it's moving the greenhouse or whether it's a facility that's closer to the greenhouse. That clears up a lot of issues for us, not least of which being ensuring that we're compliant with ADA compliance, et cetera. And so, that would ultimately be, you know, the goal. But in order to know if this concept is valid, we need to know if we could actually build on the site. So, therefore, what I am looking for is to ensure that there is support to see, first step one, if the site is a formidable option or if it is not.
I think I would like to understand what the other options are versus the organizations that we've used before. I know there's organizations out there that are design-build that would do both of the project, that would design it and build it altogether, which costs brings the cost down.
I think design-build is always an option, but I think that's a step ahead of where we are at the moment. I think our first step is to do is actual analysis of the site. Where do we stand with water retention? Are we able, do we have to add a retention pond? Do we have the, is there anything underneath the ground? Has something been built on there before? There's a lot of things that, I think where you're headed to is more of a, of the structural engineering and designing of a structure. And I'm looking more towards step one. Do we have a feasible site before we get to? I think where you are is step two in my mind.
Okay.
Like, I'm looking, I'm looking even back one from that. Can it be accomplished? Right? And then if we, if the answer is yes, that is an option, then we come back and we start weighing the options as far as if we want to pursue it. Now, we start looking at, as far as engineering firms, could it be a design-build or is it HDH or Stan Tech or RRMM or whatever other litany of companies that do that type of work? I think design-build is certainly an option. But again, I'm even, I'm even one step back from that to make sure that the site is feasible. So.
I got you. Thank you.
In the spirit of no surprises, Jack, I think that it would be important that we have a better heads-up as to what the discussion is moving forward.
I didn't add this to it. I didn't add this to the, Melissa did.
But the vote, or the straw poll, shall we say?
Yeah.
I don't feel that that was a very fair assessment for tonight. Along with Dr. Hornick's idea of site feasibility, and I guess that's, that's the goal for the next step moving forward.
Yes.
I would also like to have conversations about, you know, if we decide that that site is feasible, when we go back to the designing and engineering, I would like to explore dual options. So, maybe at the same time, we could be looking towards a secondary option so that way we can have two before the board to make a final decision upon. But that would just be my request.
So, you would be for the civil design?
For-
The engineer?
For the engineering of this site that, because I guess, I still, I'm not fully comprehending what the next goal is. Are we just looking at the land to see if the land is feasible to build on?
That is the absolute best way to summarize it, yes. We have a concept of what we think could fit on a piece of land. The question is, can you feasibly build on the land? And so, that's where we would want, you know, a professional to really give us that assessment.
And that includes infrastructure, so like water and power as well?
Correct.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
So, yes?
For that step alone, for nothing further.
That step alone? Yes.
That step alone.
Okay.
And you?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so you have a consensus, so.
Copy that.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Moving on. Try to get out of here tonight, people, sorry. Consideration of the VSBA membership renewal. Any discussion? Let's start with that.
Who wants to go first?
Madam Chair, do you want to, would you like a motion to have it on the table?
Sure.
Initially, I moved to approve the VSBA membership renewal.
Can you repeat that? I can't hear you.
I moved to approve the VSBA membership renewal.
I second that.
Discussion? No discussion?
No, Madam Chair, I think everyone knows where I stand on that.
All right. So, then I will call the vote. Vote. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I thought you just said that you would, that you made a motion to approve it. I'm sorry, did I misunderstand that?
Correct.
You did.
Yes.
Motion to approve the membership.
Yes, I moved to approve and then-
And then you voted no?
Correct.
So, once again, this board, thank you so much for transparency, for discussion. I appreciate that. It's very apparent that you need no training in governance.
There's no other, there could be another motion on the table. Madam Chair, if you would, would you want another motion?
You would like to do it that way? I'm fine with either.
I don't think we need to do the show. I'll just call it the show. I think Sandy had some things that she wanted to say.
I did, I did ask for discussion, Ms. Harrington.
I think Ms. Harrington was-
You did ask for discussion, but this is not identified as an action item on this agenda. So, I didn't realize that when I deferred to Chelsea that she was going to make a motion and that the motion that she made, she would vote against.
Madam Chair, I would like to recall the last motion as we were, as I was a winning party of that motion. I'm able to recall it. So, again, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the VSBA membership. If there is a second, that would open the floor for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Point of order. This is not on the agenda as an action item. I would move that we continue discussion as it is agendized.
Madam Clerk, in keeping with the point of order, could you clarify, do we have the ability to make a motion even if it's not a agenda?
Please talk louder, I cannot hear you.
I was, I was asking to clarify your point of order if we are able to, per Robert's rules of order, if we are able to have a motion on an item that is not listed as an action item.
It is at the board's discretion. I believe we've been told before, but as you may or may not remember, I don't agree with that. I think that we have set up and established a process where information is provided, presentations are given, opportunities for the board to ask questions, and at the following meeting, we have public comment that then helps to inform us in our final vote and decision. So, you may do what you want. You have the majority. You tend to do that anyway, but that's how I feel about it.
Ms. Byron, did you have an answer for that? It's up to the board's discretion.
Right.
Madam Chair, there's a motion on the table. I don't believe it's been seconded.
May I have a second for discussion?
The second would be to approve the renewal of the VSBA membership.
I will second so we can discuss.
Thank you.
Okay, so, would you please explain to me why? Why we need to terminate this membership? Why you feel that this is not a viable, not contract, because we don't really have a contract, but a viable agency to associate with in order to ensure that we have governance training, support, legislative advocacy, those type of things? If you could please help me to understand why you don't feel that's necessary, it might help me.
So, we do have legislative advocacy. Sandy, you and I serve on that committee together. So, I do believe that we have that covered. Board docs is included, or it's excluded, so all of our policies, et cetera, are our own and we can continue with the board docs subscription, shall you say? Additionally, the Board of Education provides updates. There's also legislative guidance that's put out by the Board of Education. So, I believe all the bases are covered and we are able to attend trainings and, by the way, we are required to attend trainings once a year, but it does not have to be through the VSBA. I have not had to use VSBA resources once in the last two years and I feel like that money could be better spent elsewhere in our school system.
I agree with everything that Ms. Quinn Turn just said, in addition to the fact that the VSBA essentially has been a monopoly for a very long time. They self-identify as a lobbying organization and they lobby for many things that I, on principle, stand against and I'm not interested in supporting them. They are, they demand that all of us, it's either all or nothing. It's a collective. None of us have an individual voice. If you try to disagree with them, they will shut you down. I've seen it happen. I've listened to recordings where they mock our governor and anyone who holds a conservative viewpoint, as I've been very clear that I do. And I prefer to take my training from someone who supports my values.
And, Madam Chair, would you mind sharing, since this was the number-one goal that you had identified at the beginning of our term, is to get out of the VSBA contract? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go first and you go last?
Sure, please.
I mean, I'll be brief.
Be brief, Jim.
I'm not for us leaving the VSBA. I actually don't disagree with some of the comments that Ms. Dawson made. That being said, the board does not use the VSBA, the administration does. The VSBA does give training for all of us, but then there's been alternative options that members have chosen and have been supported in doing so. My concern is twofold, really. The VSBA, what they do is when Richmond has policies and laws that are enacted, the VSBA basically goes through those and helps us update our policies and procedures to make sure that we stay in compliant, that we're not legally liable. That's what it does. Can other people do that? Yes, they can. Lawyers. And lawyers are going to cost money. And we will have extensive legal fees when we remove ourselves from the VSBA. And I will stop right there.
Then I will continue. So, it's my understanding that we do have a policy committee. Any policy that we have written over the last year and a half or two years, we have ran by our attorney. So, even though they were recommended by the VSBA, we still had our attorney look over those policies. My biggest concern is that we are paying a lump sum for the board. The classes and all of the extra things are extra. They are not part of the fee. What's included with that fee is our policy review. A, it is a, sorry. We have a subscription for a week or monthly, I forget what it's called, sorry. A monthly, monthly policy or monthly newsletter and then our membership services. And if I were to read the members of services, a strong lobbying group, a strong lobbying and advocacy voice locally, statewide and nationally. Just to clarify that locally, I don't know that they've supported us. They've asked us if we would support certain policies that they were going to try to get done through the state. We in Orange County can't do electric buses. It's just not possible. That was one thing. There was many others. Publications, the daily news, webinars, podcasts, virtual meetings, these are all, other than the publications and the daily news, everything else on this is listed, is addition to the membership. High-quality conferences, webinars and meetings, those are offered through other agencies. School board development and trading programs on varying topics, same thing. There are other agencies that do not require the entire board to be members of. Access to policy services. This, again, I was just stating, we do have a policy committee. We have an attorney that reviews the policies. A lot of the ones that we've done recently have come through our policy committee, not through the VSBA. Professionals to assist with superintendent searches, strategic planning services, community and public relations, legal concerns and other school board needs. The bulk of those things we've already done and I really don't want to be looking for a superintendent, so I don't necessarily need those services from them. Legal assistance fund to support access to the VSBA staff attorney. From my understanding, this attorney is when it comes to policy, not necessarily when it comes to the board. We don't have access to their attorney unless it's a policy that we are asking about. So, in my opinion, I don't think that paying the $8,850.13 yearly in addition to the policy services, which is another $3,000 per year, and then additionally for the newsletter, it was another $400 a year, plus every-
Which we don't get.
Which we don't get. That's the one thing we've opted out of. But all of the classes, all of the webinars, all of the other services that they talk about, we pay in addition. We pay a minimum of $200 to $350, depending on where they have the, if it's a webinar or if it's an actual in-person conference, per person. The school then has, is paying that for us to go, which again, yes, they are paying for the other associations that are doing the training, but when they're not paying for a full membership for the entire board. So, my biggest issue is that we are paying for everybody to utilize a membership that maybe one or two of us actually utilize.
Madam Chair, I also would like to offer up the fact that I don't want to spend money on an organization that publishes op-ed hit pieces on single board members, which that did in fact happen to myself.
And Madam Chair, if I could also just mention the fact that you just named a lot of thousands of dollars multiplied by all of the school divisions in the state and they are completely not transparent about where their money goes. They are in fact being sued now by a Hanover County parent who FOIA'd them and they refuse to give up any information. So, we're paying taxpayer money to an organization that is not being transparent with the public. I don't know the results of that lawsuit at this point, but I think it speaks volumes.
Thank you. So, I was advised before the meeting tonight that the majority was not interested in having a conversation or compromising on this, that they would come to the board meeting tonight and would vote no on it. I'm not sure how that occurred since they were not in a public meeting that I remember. So, I'm going to direct my comments and my concerns to the constituents and the stakeholders. I have up here the new school board member handbook. I'm going to leave it up here. If anyone is interested, we will also have it online for you. I would like to provide all of the board members a copy because I don't think that you have attended VSBA. Maybe one of you has attended a single training or two. Is that correct?
I believe Chelsea and I both went to the new member ori-
We attended the new member orientation.
So, one time, two years ago? Okay.
I also attended a couple of other training sessions in which they did not like my opinion and I was not welcome to share it on certain hot topic items.
And I was also at additional webinars as well.
Well, I'm glad that you did take some advantage because I was not aware of that. Who would you suggest is an alternative to the VSBA and the services that they provide? You said there are other organizations that provide policy, other organizations that have services for board members? Can you please provide your recommendation or who you're thinking of?
I think that's the beauty of it. We all have a choice.
And you would still have a choice, even if we maintained our relationship with the VSBA? Is that correct?
That is correct, but I'm not forwarding, I'm not forcing them to pay the $8,000.
You know, I find your argument relative to the cost pretty disingenuous since you walked in here on the night that the budget was adopted and you threw out three new positions for close to $400,000 without batting an eye. So, I think that's pretty disingenuous. I think that we have a lot of pros in maintaining our association. I think that we have a lot of pros in maintaining our association with the VSBA. There are some misconceptions, and again, I have some information relative to misperceptions. I'm not going to read that to everybody, but I will make sure that this is posted and available if anyone's interested in it. One thing that really struck me was this one single-page flyer that said, "VSBA. Whose responsibility is it?" Place a B in front of those items that are relevant for school boards and an S in the blank before the item is managed by school administration. Even if we cancel this contract, I would suggest Board members need to look at that. We have the opportunity to attend governance training and to become master, let's see what the term actually is, the VSBA Master Board Program. Again, looking towards excellence, excelling. We do not have to adopt policy that is recommended to us through the VSBA. I heard somewhere earlier, I believe Chelsea said, that we already have legislative advocacy. There is no way in this world that you and I can do the job that the VSBA organization does. What we will do, and what we had talked about, is being a complimentary process that would advocate for things that are as important to Orange County and our students and our teachers and our parents, but you and I can't do it. I am looking at policy, I am reading articles, I am researching hours upon hours on a daily basis. This is something that VSBA does for us. As a matter of fact, when policies are being discussed at the state level, they actually have representatives that stay in Richmond during that whole time, so that they can develop relationships and they can have conversations and they can advocate for things that their members agree to. There is currently, from my understanding, one single Board in the entire state who does not belong to the VSBA, and that would be Warren County. I was asked at one point, would the, would the Orange County Public School System and Board want to be recognized as a Board and System of Excellence, as is in Fairfax County or Falls Church, or do we want to align ourselves with Warren County? I don't know. Apparently, you may.
Madam Chair, I have one final comment before calling the question.
I'm not done. So we have had a difference of opinion of how the Board's roles and responsibilities are required, the legal obligations of those and how this Board operates. To many occasions, I have sat here and had information brought to the Board the night of the Board meeting, without having opportunities to deliberate or do the research that I would like to do before that. I have asked, time and again, to have specific time available, so that we can look into these issues and not just bring them forward like that. For the majority, I would say that that has been adhered to and I appreciate that. But in my opinion, we have challenges just running a Board meeting. It's not pretty sometimes. I get a lot of negative feedback from constituents and outside. I have a huge problem with you eliminating the opportunity for me, as a Board member, to get appropriate training. If we don't agree with something that they are advocating for, we can have that conversation. Chelsea and I could then work with our local legislators to ensure or request them not to support it, or to change the language in some manner that may suit Orange County better. But just to unilaterally, as a majority, choose to terminate the contract, I just have a significant issue with that and I personally feel that you are taking a huge resource away from me. We do Board docs on that. I know that the superintendent and the Board clerk uses the system quite often. I don't know if we have gotten any updates on additional costs for purchasing the Board docs contractor, contracting with Board docs outside of the VSBA. I know that it is an opportunity. I don't know if there are other organizations who may be able to move our policy into another I don't know. I think that I know that some of the alternative school Board advocacy and agencies that you may or have been involved with, and one that I had wanted to go and explore more, do have religious undertones included in their websites and the information that is out there. It is important that we recognize the importance of religion. We've recognized and respect individuals and parents in how they teach their children and how they believe in their religion, but it's just like the books in the library. You don't have the right to tell a different student, someone else's student, or someone else as a Board member, what they can or cannot do. So you will do what you want, but I think that this is a significant step in the wrong direction and I will continue to advocate for proper governance. And I would say that, you know, we also have a Board member who has, on your Facebook page, taken out an ad to suggest to our citizens to vote against a legislative bill that was put out there that would have helped this county fund facilities without any additional property tax burden or anything else like that. So I think that you're making a decision with bias and I do not support it.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to address a couple of things. First of all, when I suggested the creation of the Legislative Committee, it was with the intention to remove, at least by one-fifth, to remove from the VSBA. Additionally, this decision has no religious connotation whatsoever, so I'm not sure why that was intenuated either. But with that, I would like to call the question. Madam Chair.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Madam Chair, to clarify, the motion is to renew the VSBA membership.
The motion's on the table, to renew the VSBA membership. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All those undecided?
I said aye, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
My bad.
I got a little lost for a minute.
Understood.
And so this will, this contract will now terminate when?
June 30th.
June 30th?
Our policies terminate May 31st.
And I, and I don't believe I heard any response relative to my request or question about who will be providing these services, so hopefully we'll get some feedback and updated our next meeting.
I will get a list together for you of other alternatives.
That would be nice.
All right, moving on. Discussion of policy revision, or discussion of proposed revision to policy DJR dash R. I believe this is Ms. Quinter, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just didn't see anything in our policy that would cover us on behalf of other parties purchasing items on our behalf without Board approval. I don't wish to have a labor discussion on this, I just would request, and I wanted to get this in front of the public, but request to have this run by our attorney for language. And this would go, fill in with policy DJR.
Dr. Hornick? I think we had discussions on this one.
Yeah, so if we go back to March?
I think it was, when we had the renewal, the contract, not renewal, but the contract for the restrooms.
Correct, yeah. And we had met and spoke with our Division Council, and this was one that, if you remember, we wanted to take a look at and do quite a bit of separating as far as language to have a little bit more clarity, so this is the regulation we were referring to.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you. So we will move forward with having legal counsel look at the, over this and come up with some alternatives.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, if he could also look at current policies and state law that are already in place, I just don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Ms. Harrington, Blue Ridge, yes, Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School Board Report.
We just were able, excuse me, the Virginia School Board Governor's School, end of year, had a discussion on the reports and presentations that the students provided and also discussed the budget and approved a 3% raise to be included in the budget for the administrator. I forget her, Dr. Hornick, what's her title?
Ms. Elliott.
Yes, what's her title? Title?
She is the, she's the Director of the Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to the Piedmont Regional Education Program Board Report. Ms. Dawson?
Yes, I was at the meeting last Wednesday in Charlottesville and the Board voted to approve employee salary increases from 1% to 3% to be commensurate with what most divisions are doing for their staff. And that additional 2% cost is going to come from the fund balance, so there won't be any more cost incurred for the division participation of their students. The biggest challenge right now for PrEP is that the contract at the Ivy Creek School with Albemarle County is going to expire a year from now, June 30th, 2025, and there is no place to go. So they have formed a committee of Board members and special ed directors and superintendents within the PrEP Board to investigate the alternatives, the first of them being finding a new building somewhere at a cost that's affordable. Secondly, perhaps dividing up, maybe elementary going to one county and middle school to a different county and high school to a different county, which is obviously not ideal. Third option would be to temporarily suspend operations until a building can be found. And fourth option is to just disband PrEP altogether. So the Executive Director, Angela Neely, gave us a history. PrEP goes all the way back to 1975 and it was really fascinating look at a lot of challenges that they've overcome in that amount of time, and so there's a big challenge now and that's where it stands. If anybody has a rich uncle with an empty school building somewhere, we'd like to talk to you.
We'll raise our hand.
Thank you. All right, moving on to six, Board Member Comments. Do we have anything anybody would like to add?
I would like to add some, a couple of things, please. I would like to request that an item be included in future agendas, that states future agenda items, so that we can have those conversations and thumbs up, thumbs down, agree or disagree on something and whether or not we go forward and do further research and spend time on that. I was going to also speak of unity of purpose, but I think I'll save that for another day, because I'm not feeling very unified right at the moment. And then finally, as normally happens when I speak to an item, there is not a lot of attention given to what I'm saying, so I will again ask, based on the CIP building discussion, I believe, that I had, excuse me, that I had asked for the superintendent to research and provide information back and I got nothing. I'm just wondering, is that something that you did not agree with? And I can't even find my notes, so I'm sorry about that. Does anybody remember which item that was? It was, it was request Board to Direct Administration. So I guess, yeah, I forgot and nobody else was listening, so thank you.
Do you remember what day it was?
It was just here, it was just a few minutes ago.
Oh, just here?
Yeah, when I, the last item that I was speaking to, at the end of it, I asked if I could ask for agreement to direct the superintendent to follow up on something and unfortunately, right at the moment, I just don't remember exactly what that is.
Well, the five of us, I mean, just to clarify, the five of us agreed to give him the permission to move forward on-
That was not, yeah, I do.
-Civil Engineer.
No, I'll remember, I'll bring it back next time, I apologize.
I just had one quick thing, if that's okay? So graduation was Saturday. I thought it was outstanding, under difficult circumstances. Despite a lot of public's belief, the five of us cannot control the weather. But I thought Dr. Hornick, his entire team, and then Mr. Price, phenomenal job pouring down rain when it began, but everybody got in, it went quite well. That was one, too. Scholarship night, Deanna, I hate to put you on the spot, so Orange County Education Foundation, we have two Board members here tonight, thank you both for being here. Do you know off the top, I should know, do you know off the top of the head how much Orange County Education Foundation gave out in?
Just under $100,000.
$100,000, yeah. And Mr. Hager, your foundation?
$50,000 for first semester, 2.8 average, they get $50,000 for second semester.
Yeah, well, thank you both for your volunteer work. Doesn't feel like it, does it?
It's our pleasure, actually.
Yeah, and scholarship night was outstanding as well. Thank you. I think it was 1.2?
Yes, close to it.
1.2 million for our seniors for scholarships, quite impressive. Thank you.
My comment also relates to graduation. I wanted to give a special recognition to Adam Oats. He was out there in the rain and we got there and it took 30 minutes to get from the airport to the high school and he was out there in the pouring rain, pants were soaking wet. He had the biggest smile on his face, was running and helping people, so I think he deserves a special shout-out. He did an amazing job with a wonderful attitude on the dreariest of days, so that was, that was well deserved.
Good point, excellent.
All right.
Ms. Harrington, I believe what you had asked earlier, looking back, had to do with the presentation earlier from Ms. Hatfield and looking at ATI.
Other alternatives?
Yes, I did, I thank you very much for reminding me.
Yes, ma'am.
I will provide this to you in writing, I believe, and that way it can be clarified. I had requested the Board authorize administration to research whether alternatives such as those offered through Anti-Trafficking International provide a value added for our students and community, including program costs, training, curriculum, professional development, additional resources and support, and also comparative to other organizations that may offer the same thing, including the Virginia Department of Education. Thank you.
All right, moving on. June 3rd draft agenda.
I actually didn't put one up because I have lately been doing so much action that I'm having to gut it, so it, the only item that we should be carrying forward at this time-
Be the calendar.
Is the calendar.
Okay, gotcha.
That we're presenting tonight.
And the Board Calendar is under there as well.
Actually, our calendars have finally slowed down. So we have June, we have the School Board Meeting on the 3rd, our retiree, it's actually a brunch, I put celebration, but it's a brunch at 10 o'clock and you all received invitations this evening. And we have our work session on the 17th, we moved that up because of some conflicts. And then I believe, Chelsea, you have a meeting with the-
Head Start.
Head Start? Okay. I never remember.
You already have Mary Washington on there.
So you have a Head Start, okay. And then for July, if you approve the calendar on June 3rd, then we will have a meeting on the 15th of July and that will be our only meeting for that month. And then there is an Ed Foundation Board Meeting and we are also co-hosting with the County Wellness Expo at the Hornet Sports Center on the 26th.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Byram. All right, moving on. Closed session certification, please, Ms. Dawson.
I make a motion that we go into closed- I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A of the Code of Virginia. The Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A one of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, retirement of employees and the superintendent's evaluation.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session. Ms. Dawson, could I have closed session certification, please?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas two-point-two dash thirty-seven-twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byram, may I roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinter?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows: five yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Dr. Hornick, deposition of personnel actions.
Yes, I'm looking to please approve the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Ms. Dawson, may I have a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the personnel agenda to include resignation, leave of absence, non-renewal employment, transfer, salary adjustment, rescinding employment, rescind resignation of staff and summer school extracurricular and coaching appointments.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. I guess that's it.
Moved to close.
I adjourn. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you.